Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please, Mrs. Meltzer.
Trustee Metuzak?
Present.
Trustee Keys?
Here.
Trustee Patton?
Here.
Supervisor Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Kress?
Present.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Here.
Clerk Meltzer here.
Thank you. Do we have, I have eight items on the agenda. Are there more or less?
Perfect. Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Section. Thank you. Roll call please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. For those who have been here for the first time, we have public comment cards on the front. You are welcome to fill one out and have your three minutes at the end of the meeting. Otherwise, as items come before us, you're welcome to speak to that item. So with that, we'll take item number one. Mrs. Meltzer, do you have anything on the election?
A report, you mean? Well, actually, we're looking forward to the next election.
Oh, no, don't start that.
So the last election went well. We are certified. We got our certification. And so that election is completed. There's some confusion about, you know, names coming off the ballot and how that's going to play out. But everything went very well. We're looking and planning for the November 5th election, and there will be the three early voting sites that will, we want to talk a lot about to get the voters out to utilize that opportunity. It's a very convenient opportunity for voters to actually be able to vote their ballot in person, just like they would on Election Day, but they get to do it up to nine days prior. And that includes two Saturdays and two Sundays prior to Election Day. So I'm hoping that more Clinton Township residents will utilize those early voting opportunities. And it'll be located at Kensington Church, which is on 25,000 Hall Road in, at the corner of Grashit and Hall. And then there's the Civic Center grounds here at 40700 Romeo Plank Road, and then also at the Baker College on 15 Mile and Little Mac, which is Faith Baptist Church. Those are the locations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll start with the consent agenda. Does anyone have a concern with A through F?
I would move adoption of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item two is introduction of applicants seeking appointment to the Board of Ethics. Is that applicant is here this evening? Would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you. I've prepared a little something, so, for my three minutes. Thank you for having me, everyone. My name is John Krilotakis. I'm a 47-year-old Clinton Township resident, living here with my wife and my 17-month-old daughter. I'm pleased to be here today as an applicant for the open position of the Board of Ethics, and I'm eager to contribute my experience and dedication in maintaining the high standards that benefit our community. I've worked in both startups and large organizations the past 20 years, including the corporate offices of Amazon. I've worked for LinkedIn as well. Throughout my career, I have developed and implemented various policies, ranging from sales and ethics to travel policies, disciplinary actions, et cetera. Currently, I'm focused on streamlining our policies and procedures as part of an effort alongside with our legal counsel to achieve ISO certifications, specifically revolving around customer data privacy. I currently work for, my current management role in HR at a software company that develops language learning apps for schools and government, has centered on ensuring fairness and transparency in sales, including government contracts with all branches of military, intelligence, and public library systems, and up to state levels contracts, involved in hiring practices, disciplinary actions, and things like offboarding procedures and et cetera. I've also served on the board of a 100-year-old Greek heritage organization in Detroit for the past seven years. I'm currently a trustee on that board as well. This role has deepened my commitment to community service and given me valuable insights into leadership within nonprofit settings as well. I believe that serving on the Board of Ethics would be a valuable opportunity to give back to the township, and for myself, to hopefully grow within larger roles within the township in the future. I'm passionate about maintaining the integrity of our community and ensuring that all residents benefit from fair and responsible leadership. So thanks for considering my application. Look forward to the possibility contributing to the important work of that.
Thank you, Jen. Let me ask you one question. How did you find out about this opening?
You know, I work directly for my CFO, and he's kind of like a mentor to me, and he's on several boards. And we discussed that during one of our meetings, and coincidentally, while we were in one of our meetings, I started Googling for open board positions, and we popped up. So very serendipitous that I'm a resident, so.
Well, here's my recommendation. We have not had a lot of issues on this. Here's a man who's come forward. "I was concerned about where you came from." Now, I'm not concerned anymore. So I'm willing to take a motion to accept him tonight.
Awesome. Support.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
To a point, correct?
To a point, yeah.
Motion to a point?
To a point.
To a point.
Make a motion.
To be clear, I had no concerns on where you came from. No worries. No worries. I didn't have the same concerns, but I will support the motion.
Well, you always have concerns as to who brings somebody forward, and we have had no problems with this board at all. In fact, almost no contact at all. So here's somebody coming forward in the community that wants to be part of the community and move forward beyond this. Who is, I forget who has the floor.
We did the motion as support.
Mr. Cannon, you made the motion, and Trustee Keys supported it.
Are you fine with that?
Yes. Sounds like I just have to brush up on my rules of order.
Yeah. No, you don't. Roll call please.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Looking forward to the next steps, so. Thank you.
Good for you. And thank you for volunteering. It's a non-paid position, as everyone knows. I think almost everyone knows. Introduction? Okay. Resolution recognizing September 13th through 22nd as welcoming week.
Please find attached a resolution recognizing September 13th to the 22nd, 2024, as welcoming week in Clinton Township. In 2015, Clinton Township became the first welcoming township in Michigan. We are part of a movement of communities across the globe who recognize that welcoming residents of diverse backgrounds builds unity and strengthens connections. It has been the board's pleasure to recognize this important week every year since 2015. Thank you for your consideration in adopting the attached resolution. Robert Cannon, supervisor.
So moved.
Support. Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
This is like my favorite resolution that we do in the whole course of business. I would like Clinton Township to be a very welcoming place for everyone. It's a great place to live, to work, to do business, to raise our kids. We are an amenity-rich township. I want to see it keep that way. And it also makes life much more interesting when we get people from all different ethnic groups coming in and living here. So I really love this resolution. I'd like to see us do more with it. I'm not sure what that is, but I really love this resolution.
There's room to do more. And by the way, thank you very much. I agree with you.
She could resurrect the Cultural Diversity Committee again.
I would like to. Roll call.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Speaking of welcoming, the Goodfellows banners.
I make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
Don't double introduce, Tammy.
All right. Well, she knew. So the Clinton Township Goodfellows will be hosting their annual pasta dinner on Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Mirage Banquet Center. We are requesting permission to post banners and signs to advertise our event, which benefits the children of Clinton Township. We would like your permission to put these signs and banners up in strategic locations in the township one week prior to the dinner. Like in past years, we will seek property owner permission prior to installation, and all signs and banners will be removed within the following three days of the event. We would also request to have the dinner promoted on the various electronic signs throughout the township, including the two signs on Grashit, fire station number one and five, as well as the marquee signs at the fire station and Township Civic Center. We value our past cooperation with the Township Board of Trustees and look forward to working with you once again and seeing you at the dinner. Thank you for your continued support of our organization. Sincerely, Cheryl Cannon, President of the Clinton Township Goodfellows.
Thank you. This is an ongoing effort for many years to help the kids who don't have enough help. Paul?
So, Mr. Cannon, if I may, there has been some confusion regarding some dates for different events happening within the township. The Clinton Township Inclusive Playground Committee is planning their chili cook-off, and when we found out that that was scheduled on the same night as the Goodfellow spaghetti dinner, we knew that we definitely didn't want to compete with that, and two great causes that shouldn't be competing against one another.
Of course.
And so we immediately moved that. And I was just trying to look up online here so I can give the date. So to confirm, it's October 16th at 6:00 p.m. at Great Shots for the chili cook-off dinner.
Good.
And so no competition, and we encourage residents to come to both events because they're both great causes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Roll call please.
So just to clarify for those listening, the Goodfellows pasta dinner is Wednesday, October 9th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Mirage Banquet Center. And Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Adoption of sign ordinance.
This was introduced at the last meeting. For an introduction, this is appropriate for us to approve it at this time unless there's any changes, but the attorney has reviewed it, and it's in order.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Supported by Mrs. Metuzak. Roll call please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Resolution demanding reappropriation of funds to remedy water pollution.
Would you like me to read the resolution in?
The whole thing?
Yes.
We can do that. It's going to be a short.
You can summarize if you wish. I'm glad it's on.
Okay.
But nobody's going to understand it.
All right. It's a resolution demanding reappropriation of funds to remediate water pollution. This has to do with the Oakland County dumping in the Clinton River. It's been a permitted practice by Eagle. Little background, when you hear the word sanitary sewer, that is not sanitary at all. The sanitary sewer is where your toilets go, the kitchen sink goes, all that sort of thing. And in Oakland County, with the area that this motion refers to, they combine their sanitary, which is their toilets and such, with their storm drains in a lot of instances. And during heavy rain events, all the materials or all the sewages go to the same location. And when they reach capacity, they dump their combined sewage. They say it's treated. That's up for debate. But the floodgates open, and it goes in the Red Run Drain and eventually makes it through Clinton Township, through the Clinton River, and into Lake St. Clair, and then obviously down the Detroit River and downstream. So what this is, is this is just us expressing our frustration with the fact that it's gone on for so long. Mr. Cannon and a lot of the board members know that we spent $30 million correcting our problem where we were having discharges into the Clinton River during heavy storm events. And we spent the money, we fixed it, and Oakland County, for decades upon decades, have been paying their water and sewer bill, with a portion of it you would assume would go to capacity, you know, increases in capacity and such, and they've done no such thing. They haven't made any efforts. Like I said, they have a permit from Eagle that when it reaches a certain level, their storage backs up. Either it's going to back up in their basements, or they're going to dump it in our river. And it's been permitted to dump in our river, and I'm sure Mr. Cannon recalls, we had an incident ourselves where one of our pumps, a number of years ago, dumped some sewage in the Clinton River. I don't know if it was inadvertently, or if some sort of alarm triggered it, but we received $100,000 fine for dumping in the Clinton River. Whereas Oakland County has a permit to dump in the Clinton River, and ultimately, the lake, which closes Metro Beach, and you end up with the sludge in the river and in the lake south of the Clinton River. Although, I'm sure you may have heard about the muck and the algae and all the mysterious stuff that takes place south of the Clinton River, that's in association with sewage discharge from Oakland County. So what this resolution just says is that it expresses our frustration with it, and it encourages our lawmakers. Our hands are tied. There's really nothing we can do other than express our frustration that this can't continue. And as I understand it, the permit that the discharge plan or the Oakland County plant has expired October 1st of 2023, and they're running on an extension right now. So I'm sure in some shape or form, they're in negotiations to renew this permit, but I would like to encourage our other elected officials, ones that have influence in the state, to step in and do what they can to make, put provisions in here so that monies, like infrastructure monies that are given to Oakland County, rather than go to beautified parks, maybe repair their sewer system, and make an effort to, make some effort to increase their capacity. And that's the short and long of it. And that's what the resolution, the first seven items are statements of fact, and the last one is the, do you want to read that, the now therefore?
Sure. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Charter Township of Clinton Board of Trustees adopts this resolution and requests that it be distributed to elected state officials representing the Charter Township of Clinton and county commissioners representing the Charter Township of Clinton, urging that legislative action be undertaken to restrict grant appropriations in the matter as set forth in the preamble, and require that administrative consent order be entered into or amended in order to eliminate combined sewer overflows and decrease inflow and infiltration in communities contributing to 12 town overflows into Macomb County.
I make a motion to adopt this resolution, and in doing so, it's more than anything else, an expression of our frustration and an acknowledgement of the facts. This has no teeth to it. There's nothing we can do to stop them from dumping in Oakland County. But this shows that our residents and our taxpayers, that we are encouraging other elected officials to make an effort to resolve this during this short window where there might be an opportunity to make some revisions or conditions on monies received.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Kress, I appreciate you bringing this forward. It's good. It was better that you talked instead of the resolution. Really, because it was from the heart. We in Clinton Township have spent a lot of money under the direction of Mary Bednar to correct our problem, our very serious problem that we had here in the township. We had probably one of the most serious problems in the state of Michigan. We have not even come close to that again. Oakland County is doing a very poor job. And I think that what this brings forward is that Candace Miller and others are addressing it, and that we should encourage that. However, we still, in Clinton Township, will address any issues that might pollute Lake St. Clair. Period. Period. We're not going to rest on what we've done, because we've done a lot. We've spent millions of dollars in the last 24 years, and we will continue to spend money. And I thank this board and the boards prior to this who supported everything, because it's not easy to spend money in the ground. Nobody sees all that. We see it in the lake, but I don't live on the lake. People who use the lake and people who fish, they need it. So we're doing the right thing here in Clinton Township, and we're asking, through Mr. Kress, that other people do the same thing that we're doing currently here in Clinton Township, and continue to do in Clinton Township. And I forget, sometimes, Mr. Dolan, I forget to give him acknowledgement too, because all those sewer committee meetings that we spent the last 20-some years, I don't like being on a sewer committee. But it was worthwhile in the end. So thank you. So we have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Cannon?
I'm sorry.
May I?
Yes, of course.
I'm totally in support of expressing our outrage to Oakland County, because they don't spend the money.
They don't seem to care.
Well, it's not that they don't care, because the underlying problem of all of this is that state government and the federal regulators don't set standards high enough. That, I mean, this is, this is fine. I'm happy to express my outrage, because I feel it all, every time there's a heavy rain. I don't like it. But until we can get the DEQ and until we can get the EPA to set higher standards for discharges that cover everybody, and we're going to meet those standards, because we do a good job with that.
We are.
But until they set the standards, that's where the teeth comes in to this. And I would really urge our legislators to contact DEQ, to contact the EPA, and to really push to increase the standards, so that we're not having communities all over the state discharge untreated sewage into our waterways.
Right.
But that's the underlying problem. And so I'm happy to do this, but I really, I want more.
I agree. Thank you for your support. Mr. Keys?
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. And as usual, Trustee Metuzak has said it better than I can. Last year, we had this similar resolution. I have the same concerns that I did then, that although, to Trustee Metuzak's point, I have the same frustration and will be supporting this basically out of that frustration. But the truth of the matter is, you know, we have the same problems here in Macomb County. And Oakland County has been working for a long time to address, just like we are now, this same issue. And what I have found is that as a region, if we work together to ask for money from the state and the federal government and for changes versus continuing to punch our neighbor in the eye at the expense of a press release and a resolution, I think we would get more done. You know, again, I'm going to support this out of frustration, but if you remember, just like we have an elected official, Candace Miller, for Public Works, Oakland County has an elected official in Jim Nash, who, right after we passed that resolution last year, sent out a press release and a letter to all of us saying a lot of what we said in our resolution was a lie, and invited us to meet with him. I took the opportunity to go and sit down with his team, and do understand that a lot of money has been spent on the retention center. And they have a lot of programs, and they applaud Macomb County. If you remember the press release he sent out, it was a very friendly one, saying that he encourages us to continue this type of advocacy, but that we should work together rather than, again, punching, you know, each other at the expense. So I do want to ask, I mean, we do have our Public Works Director out here. Have we reached out to Oakland County in any way from the last time we passed this resolution?
Mrs. Bednar?
So this resolution tonight, I saw earlier today, so I didn't address that. We do go to Red Run meetings. We do, there are meetings at ourselves or the county is represented at. And so there is, you know, constant communication and so forth.
And so I have to ask the-
I think, I think the thing is, is the, we want to do more. And I think what Julie said there is, you know, we do have combined sewer overflow basins in Macomb County under, actually Candace Miller's, but she's doing more. And that's what I think she's asking, and I think that's what Dan's asking.
Yeah. No, certainly. And I want to do more, but I got the sentiment from the supervisor and the administration that Oakland County doesn't care.
No, no. No, no. Well, they care, but they're not spending the kind of money that we, they're not spending the kind of money we spent.
Okay. So again, and again, I'll support this out of frustration, but I think we need to collaborate with our regional partners.
Okay. Thank you. We'd like them to spend a little bit more and move a little bit ahead. And we will work with them. And Candace Miller will too, obviously. We have a motion. Paul?
So, thank you. I kind of feel the need to weigh in on this, because it is a double standard. The older communities that started way before we had a full appreciation for what this meant for water quality didn't have separated sewer systems. These are 14 older communities in Oakland County, and they don't have separated systems like newer communities do. However, Mount Clemens, that we literally wrap around, was required to dig up practically every street in Mount Clemens and separate those sewer lines, so that you didn't have sanitary sewer flows combined with water runoff from the streets and yards and neighborhoods. So while we've been held to that standard, and our communities, I think Frazier as well, had to separate many of their sewers, these communities have not been required. Mount Clemens had some of the largest water rates of any community in the tri-county area, and the reason why is because they had their own system, and they were forced to do this by the DEQ. The DEQ should be requiring that these Oakland County communities take that same action, and that the standards are applied across the board, rather than selectively. And I think that is the point of all of this.
I agree.
And it's the source of, the largest source of frustration.
Yep. Thank you. Mrs. Meltzer?
Just an additional comment. It makes me, I mean, kind of makes me go, huh, because, you know, we've had these agencies that work, like the DEQ, DNR, the Eagle, those are, you know, and not entities in and of themselves. They work under the administration of whoever's in power. And in Michigan, there have been, you know, three legs of the stool by one particular party, and the party is generally the one that tends to, I haven't named it, tends to be more, you know, they talk about their concern about the environment, which I appreciate and I agree with, but they have an opportunity to get it done, and it didn't get done. And these are the things that-
We're trying to move, we're trying to move ahead, though.
I know that. But we're talking about agencies putting it all on them. There's legislators there that have to do some of that heavy lifting in order for us to be able to address this issue. This, this has been going, I've been, I was first elected on this board in 2024 years this has been going on. And we've spent over $30 million in that period of time, not to mention the additional work hours that probably will never get recognized, to make it happen. And it, you know, they found it okay to fine Clinton Township and make us pay, yet Oakland County doesn't have to. I find that really makes me go, hmm, you know, like, why is there an inequity here?
It doesn't matter. We're moving from here on. Period.
I hope we're moving forward.
You're right, but let's move on. This is a resolution, and a good one. So let's put it forward and see what happens. I have hope, because when I took this job, we were in a mess. And Mrs. Bednar and Jack Dolan helped, got us out of the mess. And sort of, this board got us out of the mess, because we paid for all this. And nobody once on this board complained about all the money we had to spend. Nobody once. I haven't seen that in other communities, ever. So thank you for that, for this board and other boards. I'm sorry, I can't.
Somebody seems like they're trying to get on. I'm just trying to, I must send a message.
a message.
Mr. Cress, are you done with your presentation?
Yep. I made the motion, Paul supported it.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
All right. Getting back to easy things. Recession of assigned permit moratorium adopted in June 6th.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Before we begin, item eight, Jack, are we coming back out of closed session?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, the cable empty per Vanessa, remain. Item eight, add on the exercise of remedies for failure to honor the waste contract.
So moved.
It's a, it's a closed session to consider written legal opinion of counsel on the, on the issue of priority waste performance and legal remedies.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who supported it.
I didn't, no, I made the motion, I don't know who supported it.
Who supported?
Paul supported.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public comment cards, thank you. Sam Bushell?
Sam Bushell, 1-8546 Wayland Drive. As I notified all of you last Friday morning after the Thursday Planning Commission meeting, once again, and I think you have to have a legal question answered, the notice only noticed the one property, when the majority of the actual special land use is going to be on residential property, a different property number completely, and nothing is being brought up to standards. The, it's a dirt lot, it's not in good shape, it's in residential, it's kind of wild that it would, this, they, the planning commission approved this, sent it on to you saying this is a good thing to approve, the same night that they approved the master plan update, which calls out exactly for three pages how the homes are in such rough shape that they really, that you really have to come after us, because we're the blight problem, it's not these businesses. And there again, thinking of the ethics panel, I guess I'm going to have to look in tomorrow to how to do an ethics complaint, because this has been a steady pattern by the Planning Commission for the last three, four years, sending this board all kinds of plans, saying, we're recommending you approve this, because everything matches, when obviously, that it all matches our ordinances, when in all actuality, they've had you file one after another, variances on the fly, that there again, that the ZBA couldn't approve, because they're for financial reasons only, which has caused my entire area in the south end to become dumpier and dumpier. And there again, another ethics problem is, there again, the Hague Lighting Facility property, that it's had extensions, it needed all kinds of variances. The township attorneys had actually said, no, there's nobody other than, you know, the building department and such, they cannot issue variances. And there again, you can go down there and you realize, they didn't even, the sidewalk that they put in the front, they didn't even take to the curb, and they didn't put any sidewalk on Kelly, whereas Kelly has sidewalks on three of the other businesses on Kelly between Grossbeck and 15. And I think that, you know, there again, there's an ethics problem, there's some reason, if you remember back here a month or so ago, at 14 Mall in Harper, a project, a site plan that the township, the planner said, it was totally illegal, even the plan, the ZBA, finally he did issue a letter, said it could not be approved, and the Planning Commission, for some reason, don't know what would be the benefit to them, they still sent it out to this board. Luckily, this board turned it down. But I think we have an ethics problem that I think tomorrow, I'm going to be looking into the ethics complaint situation tomorrow, and I'm going to be filing some. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the greatest country in the world. We have next, Fred. Greatest country that allows people to come up and speak, no matter what the truth is or not. Fred?
Thank you very much. Fred Neenstedt, 41362 Justin Drive. I certainly appreciate the chance to speak today. I don't know, I might have missed some of the discussion on the overflows in the pass through of some of the dumping from Oakland County, but we had a significant problem in Clinton Township for many years with the destruction of the connector, I think, along 15 Mile, which was sewage, right? So, that was an overflow also, but it was a very expensive problem, and we keep running into it now, under the guidance of Candace Miller and her efforts to make a long-term fix. I think we finally got to a position where we'll never see that problem along 15 Mile road again. The residents of Clinton Township paid for that with increased water rates, if I'm not mistaken.
No, we paid for it, there's no doubt.
So, it was very expensive every time, and it was costly in a number of ways, so I just want to thank Candace Miller publicly for her efforts, and of course, everybody here in Clinton Township who was involved in making that fix a permanent fix. Now, I have brought up a question about public community standards for morality, interpretations of what would be considered pornographic, or in a bolder way, the sexualization of children publicly. Our society is becoming more and more accepting and tolerant, so the edges, the definition, the boundaries are being modified because of just plain acceptance. I do not accept the sexualization of children, period. But that doesn't mean my opinion is what makes the correct result. So, moral suasion now becomes a problem if we don't have a proper platform in which to speak the opinion that would drive a proper discussion to find exactly where those boundaries are. I would hope that the board would take on the challenge of defining what a, for instance, a public library, what would be an expected or an acceptable display within the library, where children would be expected to see such a thing. So, again, I'm hoping that the board will entertain some kind of resolution or discussion, or maybe a direction to a subcommittee to take on, as the Supreme Court has asked, definitions for community standards. Thank you very much, God bless.
Thank you. A motion to go into closed session is in order?
So moved.
Support.
Again, it's to discuss written opinion of legal counsel.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we will be coming out of closed session. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Going into closed session.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm recommending that a motion be adopted effective September 16th, to exercise the provisions of our contract under paragraph 18, and to implement on that date, effective on that, on that date, the provisions of a charge of $50 per day for unresolved complaints or issues in accordance with the contract terms.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Support.
We have a motion and a support. Mr. Gilliam?
Per complaint.
Complaints or unresolved issues.
He said $50 per day, I want to make sure...
It's $50 per day is, yeah, per, it's, to be clear, the provisions of the contract provide for a charge of $50 per day, so the charge is $50 per day, each day that the complaint remains in whole or in part unresolved on that day, that charge is imposed.
A motion was made in a second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. I think this probably will be heard loud and clear by the company that's serving our community right now. We want them to do well. We want them to succeed, and we're just trying to spur that on. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you all, and thank you, board, for your input in the closed session.